Evening! So, I want to start by telling you, my name is Representative Malcolm Kenyatta. And I am happy that you are here, but as I said to the Congressman, you're like two blocks out of my district, so if you move up just a couple of blocks, then you'd be in the best part of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, 181st District. But I want to start with the most important words in any and every language, thank you. Thank you for caring enough, first and foremost, about yourself and your family and the people that you love best, but also thank you for caring enough about this messy experiment in self-governance, that you are showing up, not to just hear from some folks on this stage, but you are showing up to be reminded of your own power, to be reminded of our collective power. But events like this do not happen by magic. Keep those hands clapping for all the incredible folks who welcomed us in today, in these beautiful vests, thank you. Ms. Dolores made sure I was signed in, I'm good to go. We want to thank the Pennsylvania Democratic Party, the Philadelphia Democratic Party, the Bucks County Democratic Party, the Montgomery County Democratic Party. We want to thank Powered By People for everything that they're doing, and we also want to thank the incredible young Democrats of America who are here from across the country, and my incredible friends at the Pennsylvania College Democrats as well. And I also just want to give a special bit of thanks to the incredible volunteers and organizers of Indivisible. Thank you, Indivisible. God bless Indivisible. And for the Pennsylvania Democrats and volunteers who are getting folks registered to vote, and also telling you how you can get your neighbors registered to vote. So, we're going to hear from the incredible Congressman here in just a second, but I just want to say very quickly what I said at the beginning of this about the power that you have in this moment. You know, one thing you know about would-be autocrats and would-be kings, these guys are assholes, but they're not super creative. They're not super creative. They engage in one of the tried and true tactics of would-be authoritarians and kings. They engage in what is known as historical revisionism. And a part of that historical revisionism, burning books, banning books, getting rid of websites, is about trying to make us forget who we are as Americans. This is not, in fact, the first time we've had to deal with a guy like the one in the White House, in fact. And I think it's critical for us in this moment to just get a little bit of muscle memory about the people who have come before us, who understood and believed that this idea of freedom, justice, and fairness, it can't just exist on some well-historically-preserved documents. It has to actually mean something. And so, I think often about the women of the suffragette movement who got engaged in good trouble, as we were remembering yesterday with John Lewis, who engaged in hunger strikes and tied themselves to the fences of the White House because they understood that this country's never going to be what it must be if women can't fully and equally participate in this democracy. Certainly, just a couple of days removed from Pride Month, all of us think about the incredible folks who showed up, not just at Stonewall, but at many other moments before Stonewall and after Stonewall, because they understood that in a country this great, we don't got to treat people differently because of who they love or how they identify. And I mentioned John Lewis, and I hope that all of us are thinking about what happened 60 years ago on that Edmund Pettus Bridge. And I just want to remind you of this, because it is easy in this moment, I hear a lot of people asking, who's going to be the John Lewis of this time, or the that person of this time? All of that stuff is decided later. People decide in retrospect who were the so-called heroes, but let me be very clear, there were over 600 people on that bridge that day. People who literally gave up everything by virtue of walking on that bridge, where they had a guy who said segregation now, segregation tomorrow, segregation forever. And they found themselves in a moment, just like we find ourselves, where they didn't know the end of the story. We now benefit from knowing the end of the story. But all they knew for certain was that there were dogs at the end of the damn bridge, that there were fire hoses at the end of the bridge, that they were going to be losing their jobs and have to move out of their communities by virtue of standing up that day with the transformational idea that in America, everybody ought to be treated with decency, dignity, and respect. And so, that is where, that is where we are right now in our moment of the story. We can see the dogs, we can see the fire hoses, and we have a guy, whenever he's not hanging out on Epstein's island, who is saying some version of segregation now, segregation tomorrow, segregation forever. But I don't know about each and every one of you, but I am not bowing to a damn king. I'm certainly not kissing the ring of a king. And we have a bad relationship in Philadelphia with kings, and we're not changing that relationship now. Now, I am really grateful to introduce one of my dear friends, my state senator, my big brother in politics, and the Chair of the Pennsylvania Democratic Party, Senator Sharif Streep.
Thank you for coming out. Let's give a hand for Representative Malcolm Kenyatta and the work he's doing. We appreciate you. One of our vice chairs of the Democratic National Committee. You know, I've known Malcolm and I from the same neighborhood, I've known him almost his whole life, and I'm a little bit older than him, so he's like a little brother, I'm proud of him, he's doing great work. You know, in neighborhoods like ours, the implications of what is happening with the big ugly bill are real, those consequences are real. There are families that go to, that are putting people in nursing homes, and you know that unless you're super rich, even if you've done pretty well in life, if you haven't extended stay in a nursing home, probably going to need Medicaid to kick in at some point. And even if you don't, and most of the other people who are there are on Medicaid, if you have to drop the reimbursement rates further, the quality of care at the entire home is going to drop, which means our most vulnerable, senior citizens who've worked their entire life, now in the sunset of life, are going to be impacted in a negative way because they wanted to give tax cuts to billionaires. Real-world implications of what's happening to real people. You know, there are Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, right here in this city, it's one of the greatest hospitals in the world, and you know, they are doing things around cancer research and helping children. Do you know that the NIH cuts, the cancer research, there will be parents who will cry, you know, when I was a kid, my brother was born with a heart defect, and they said he wasn't going to live, or if he did, he was going to be skinny and weak. Now, good news is, my brother is now a fat middle-aged man. But it was because of the brilliance of the scientists and the doctors, and the money that comes out of the National Institute of Health allows that to happen, and there are parents who are like mine, there are siblings who are wondering if their brother or sister is going to live, and they are cutting funding from that to give tax cuts to billionaires. We saw the wildfires in California, and we saw the devastation of the floods that have happened as well. We've seen, right here in the Commonwealth, there were floods, I-76 was underwater, we saw flooding in New York. Flooding is happening, those are the implications of climate change, and they're cutting back on initiatives, funding to, for climate change mitigation. They got rid of people who are going to give disaster emergencies. When I said this, when it happened, I said this to my wife, and she's sitting here, April right in front, and I said, why are they cutting the National Weather Service? Do they understand how bad that could be? And everyone's looking at me like, National Weather Service? But that's the people who give us the warnings, who tell people if there are going to be flash floods, you gotta move. And now, an entire group of young women who were going to camp, who thought, whose parents trusted that they were going to be safe, who were supposed to get a warning, are dead because they wanted to give tax cuts to billionaires. There are implications to this that are real, there are lives that are impacted in a deep and meaningful way. Your engagement when you knock on the door, when we take back the house, we're not just talking about taking back the house because it's some kind of game, that it's, you know, I know the Congressman is from Texas and we're from Philly, and you know, it's not like when the Eagles beat up on the Cowboys. It's not like that, it's not like that, because that's just a game, and we all go home and we're all fine. When people, when we lose this fight, people die, little girls get swept away, senior citizens don't have adequate healthcare, children in hospitals that are in need of care, like my brother did, are going to not have the care because they want to give money to billionaires. So, understand, our fight today is different, this is not merely a game, this is about impacting ordinary people's lives. And guess what? All of this craziness with the tariffs is making everything more expensive, and regular folk are just trying to get by, and he's making it harder, and now he tells them, just play with less dolls. Well, you know what? It's not just about dolls, it's about people trying to, trying to figure out how they're going to get to the next meal. And remember the days before the Affordable Care Act, when people had to choose between healthcare and food? They want to take us back to those days because they're cutting SNAP benefits for vulnerable citizens and Medicaid at the same time. We're doing this because there are regular people whose lives are on the line. With every Senate seat we win, every House seat we win, it's about protecting vulnerable people, it's not merely a game. And it doesn't matter whether you're registered Democrat or Republican, and yes, I'm chair of the Democratic Party, but there are, we got to say to our Republican friends who know it's wrong, forget about what jersey you're wearing, understand that you got to do what's right. It's not, and when you say put country ahead, put party ahead of regular, put your neighbors ahead, because sometimes people don't get it when you just put it in the big sentence. Tell people to think about the senior citizen they love and put that person first. Tell them to think about those girls at Camp Mystic and put them first. Tell them to think about the fires that cut through African-American communities and Latino communities in California and put them first. Tell them about, and guess what? Call all those folks in rural America who thought they were voting for somebody who was going to put them first, because there are 26 rural hospitals in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania alone that could be closed because of the big ugly bill and their cuts. Tell them that we got, they got to put their families first. And guess what? If we do that, if we come together, we can win, and we can win our country back, we can protect our neighbors, and I got the opportunity to introduce a guy who is not just here in Pennsylvania, who is from Texas, but he's traveled around the entire country, fighting to make sure that people understand, fighting to make sure he's been at the border and he knows the, he represented people there, he knows that the, all the craziness isn't making us safer. He understands about the healthcare cuts, and he understands that that's not going to make us healthier, but he understands that we have an obligation to talk to people, not who won't just look like us or live in our neighborhoods and our communities, but we've got an obligation to talk to old people and young people, black people and white people, people from the deep south and the far north, people from the west and east, people who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and people who are straight as a ruler, we need to make sure that we talk to people whose families have been here for generations, and people who are just coming here because they seek a better life. We have to, he understands, we have to talk to everybody, because the big tent that this country is can only be realized if we all believe it. And so, I'm pleased to introduce to some and present to others Congressman Beto O'Rourke.
That was really good, that was awesome, thank you, well done.
Thank you for that.
First Congress, oil F2, Operation Iraqi Freedom, First Cavalry Division, D-First Team. There's only two times man has walked on water, the first time is Jesus Christ, and the second time is First Cavalry Division. The Texas boys here with you, baby, from Philly, okay? We're here representing.
I'm so glad you're here. Let's all thank him for his service to our country. Every other veteran who is in here, thank you for what you've done for all of us.
I'm also a cousin of the white effort, understanding the white effort, and I did the inauguration of Barack Obama, I know everything about that base. I'm a former member of the 275th Military Police, Boeing Air Force Base, I did the inauguration of Barack Obama, I have the George W. Bush Presidential Secret Service Corps. And we all know, in DC, Trump is guilty. And you know what? Guess what? Guess what? It is personal, it is personal, because I sat there at the Philadelphia VA and watched it. I'm a political guy, trust me. My family, my family's open, the white effort, you know he's getting very tired, my cousin's getting very tired, he had a struggle last year, Dwight has announced he's getting very tired, so he will not be running for reelection, so, say his prayers to my family, my aunt, my uncle.
We're with you, and we're with Dwight.
You know what? It is personal, when you send, I'm just going to watch, when you send thugs to murder my cousin, and I'm sitting here watching, and I, I call my aunt, okay? The gloves are off of me, this ain't no political, this is personal, he sent thugs to kill my family, I know that base, and I listen, I'm going to tell you something, I'm going to tell you something about that, I'm going to tell you something, and this is what I'm telling you. Mayor Biden, they talked about COVID, I listened to that, they talked about Maryland DC Guard, six MP units, I don't want them, 75th Military Police, you didn't hear one MP unit call that is white there, that I, one of my workers were. I'll tell you another thing you didn't hear, over there, I was saying you want to answer out, Bold Air Force Base, the other part, Bold Juice one part, Chelsa right after the other part, is Danny Castellano, with the Navy, the Marine one, and the gay girl, that's where the Coast Guard is, guess what? You didn't hear no Coast Guard, you didn't hear no, you didn't hear no Coast Guard defending Capitol, with members of Congress there at the White House, did anyone hear that? Let me know.
I have a seat, and I want you, when we finish the first part of this program, if you've got a question or something else you want to say, I want to hear it, but I'll tell you what, the spirit you have, let me tell you something.
I want the guy to resign.
We're with you, the spirit you have, the fight you have, that's what all of us feel right now, that's what brought us out here today, right? There's something going on in this country that is, that is not right.
Resign, pedophile, resign, pedophile, I want the pedophile.
Let's have this meeting, let's have this, you're right, let's have this meeting together, let's have this meeting together, let's bring people into this, right? And we're going to give everyone a chance to talk, who wants to talk, we've got two microphones in the room, but first, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's here. I want to say thank you to the Senator for his powerful words, to Representative Kenyatta for getting us fired up right out at the beginning, and to each of you for spending part of your Friday evening with us, this stranger from the state of Texas. We've been holding these town halls all I have the George W. Bush Presidential Secret Service Corps. And we all know, in DC, Trump is guilty. And you know what? Guess what? Guess what? It is personal. It is personal because I sat there at the Philadelphia VA and watched it. I'm a political hack, trust me. My family, my family's open. The White House, you know, he's, you know, he's getting very tired. My cousin's getting very tired. He had a stroke last year. Uh, Dwight has announced he's getting ready to retire, so he will not be running for reelection. Uh, so, say his prayers to my family, my aunt. Uh, my aunt being.
We're with you and we're with Dwight.
You know what? It is personal. When you send, I'm just gonna watch, when you send thugs to murder my cousin, and I'm pretty ever watching, and I, I call my aunt. Okay? The gloves are off of me. This ain't no political. This is personal. He sent thugs to kill my, my, my family. I know that base. And I listen, I'm gonna tell you something. I'm gonna tell you something about that. I'll tell you something, and this is what, what I'm telling you. Mayor Biden, they talked about COVID. I listened to that. They talked about Maryland DC Guard. Six MP units, I don't want them. 75th Military Police. You didn't hear one MP unit call that is white there that I, one of my workers were. I'll tell you another thing you didn't hear. Over there, I was saying, you wanna end Castle, Bold Air Force Base. The other part, Bold Juice One Part, Chelsford Avenue, the other part is Danny Castellano, with the Navy, Green One, and the Gatewell. That's where the Coast Guard is. Guess what? You didn't hear no Coast Guard. You didn't hear, Donald Trump here, no Coast Guard defending Capitol with members of Congress there at the White House. Did anyone hear that? Let me know.
I have a seat and and I want you, when when we finish the first part of this program, if you've got a question or something else you wanna say, I wanna hear it. But I'll tell you what, the spirit you have, let me tell you something.
I want the guy to resign.
We're with you. The spirit you have, the fight you have, that's what all of us feel right now. That's what brought us out here today, right? There's something going on in this country that is, that is not right.
Resign, pedophile. Resign, pedophile. I want the pedophile.
Let's, let's, let's have this meeting, let's have this.
You're right.
Let's have this meeting together. Let's have this meeting together. Let's bring people into this, right? And we're gonna give everyone a chance to talk, who wants to talk. We've got two microphones in the room. But first, I just wanna say thank you to everyone who's here. I wanna say thank you to the Senator for his powerful words, to Representative Kenyatta for getting us fired up right out at the beginning, and to each of you for spending part of your Friday evening with us, this stranger from the state of Texas. We've been holding these town halls all over my home state in Texas, so places you would expect to see us, like San Antonio or Dallas or Houston, but also in Amarillo and Tyler and Beaumont and the places that Democrats for far too long have feared to tread. So Republicans don't even have to show up to fight for anything cuz there's no D on the ballot in November. And those folks have gone unrepresented, unheard, unlistened to, unfought for, for showing up and bringing people together. And we don't care, no me importa, if you are a Republican or a Democrat or an independent or you can't even vote. It does not matter to me that you're an American, that you love this country is all that matters at this moment of truth. And so we are bringing people together everywhere we go. And we've started to do this outside of Texas. We were in Charlotte, North Carolina earlier this week. And then a couple of nights ago came into Philadelphia to speak at the Young Democrats of America Convention, which was awesome, such amazing spirit and fight among these young people. And also, um, you know, just soaking up the, the history and the culture and the architecture and the food. We're staying right by the Redding Terminal Market. And, um, not bad, not bad. I also, I also got to see a really good friend of mine, uh, I don't know if you all know David Gwynn. David, stand up. He's, he's part of the mural arts program here in, uh, Philadelphia. So one of the things I really love about this city is its devotion and investment to public art. It's just beautiful. It's stunning. And it's just, you know, it's more than I can take in in a single visit. It makes me wanna come back. I went over to, um, I went over to David's house, um, for dinner with his family the night that I got in, and he was kind enough to walk me back to my hotel, it was about a 30-minute walk. And, you know, we're both 52 years old, so we're getting a little bit older. And David's telling me that his knees hurt sometimes when he wakes up in the morning and I'm telling him about my back problems and we're talking about our kids and our wives and, um, and I said, hey, are you drinking beer anymore? And David says, no, I don't like the way it makes me feel. I don't sleep well. And I'm like, I'm with you. I've, I've stopped drinking alcohol too. It's just not doing anything for me. And the more we, we kept talking about this, the thirstier we got. And we've, we found ourselves in this little bar next to my hotel and we had a couple of beers together. It was great. It was great. Um, it was worth any sleep you missed, David. But we met, we met somebody who came up and said hello, uh, and, uh, they said they were from Texas, they said they were from San Antonio. And I said, okay, you've got perspective, all right? Um, you know Texas and you know Philadelphia. Tell me what they have in common, tell me how they're different. And Psy said, you know, the way I put it is in Philadelphia, open mind, closed heart. Folks aren't gonna be as immediately friendly, they're not gonna smile to you on the street, they may not make eye contact, but man, they are progressive, they're thinking about the future in the way that I think about. Texas, everyone says hello, everyone makes eye contact, everyone's got a smile on their face, so they're open-hearted, but they're closed-minded. We have the most obscene abortion ban in America. We lead the nation right now in school shootings, more than two years after those 19 kids and two teachers were slaughtered in Uvalde, Texas. The minimum wage is $7.25 an hour. Most schoolteachers in our state work two or three jobs just to make ends meet. And right now, the governor is draining the fund for public ed to fund these vouchers that will go to private schools, to kids and families who are already attending these places. So she's like, that's my assessment. And I thought about it, I said, you know, there's some truth to that. You know, I've noticed the, the, you know, something a little bit different in people's faces here in Philadelphia, not, not openly as warm. However, here we are in this bar and everyone's smiling and laughing and having a good time. Maybe people just need a beer. And, and in Texas, you might think that we want all these bad things that you know us for, right? That I just described, but I've traveled this state. I've, I've been to every one of the 254 counties of Texas. I've been to the reddest, most rural places on the planet. I've been to the biggest and the blue. And, and folks aren't okay with what is happening in our state right now, but it is tougher to vote in Texas, harder to register to vote in Texas than it is in any other state in the Union. So in the same way that you folks just need another beer, we need some democracy and some voting rights and the ability to cast that ballot and register to vote, and you might see something different, right? In all honesty, you guys have been incredibly warm and welcoming and I'm grateful. And I wanna share with you right now a little bit about what I have learned by holding these town halls all over Texas and increasingly around the country. I wanna lay it on you, get your feedback and reaction. And then I mentioned we have this other microphone. I wanna hear what you're thinking about, what your ideas are, what your suggestions might be. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well. So first thing that strikes me, no matter where I go, um, no matter what part of the country that I'm in, is that the people who come together in meetings like these come out not because they're Democrats, not to come out to support a given person, they come out, as Representative Kenyatta said at the beginning, because they love our country. And because you see that our country is in trouble right now, and doesn't matter how old you are, you've never seen this country in this kind of trouble before, you want to do all that you can to save America. But importantly, you understand that what we have done thus far, up to this point, it just hasn't worked. It hasn't averted the trouble that we're in. And if we're honest with ourselves, there are some things that we did in good conscience and in good faith that probably brought this trouble to pass in the first place. I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, you're getting ahead of me right here. And so we seek something different, right? What, what we've been doing has not been working. And I'll, I'll give you a, a preview. You know, from the Democratic Party's perspective, and I'm a proud lifelong Democrat, but the triangulation, the calculation, this infatuation with money and digital technology and all that it can buy and do and reach people, it's missing something. And so we seek not so much the commerce and the science of our politics, but its common sense and its soul. I think that has been missing. Now, to be clear, the threats that we face have never been greater. And the power of those who threaten this country from within, from the highest positions of power, that has never been greater. And the very greatness of America, our Constitution, the rule of law, this idea of self-government, that has never been called into greater question. If we want to overcome these challenges, we have got to decide that we are going to present a vision for America that is worth saving. It has to be different than what we've had before. You probably saw this in the 2024 election. You had Democrats talking about democracy and that they wanted to save it, and folks are like, what democracy are you talking about? Is this a democracy where one person named Elon Musk can spend $300 million to purchase the outcome of a presidential election? Is this a democracy where political action committees can pour millions of dollars into State House, State Senate, US Congressional, US Senate races to purchase the outcomes, the policies that those members of Congress pursue, the future that we build or deny to one another? Sure doesn't feel like a democracy to me. So I think in order for us to get this right, we have to describe a new and better America, an America that's worth saving in the first place. And I think that has to begin actually in the city where we find ourselves today. This foundational premise and promise of America written not more than half a mile from where we are at Seventh and Market. This profoundly powerful idea that we are all created equally and should be expected to be treated equally under the law. No one above it, no one below it, no kings, no tyrants, but a government of, by, and for the people. But to realize that, to realize that vision, we also have to transcend the limitations that have kept us from ever fully realizing that hope up until this point. And so what I'm talking about is a democracy, one that we do not have today, but one that we must imagine together and describe to our fellow Americans in meetings like these, face to face, human to human, in rooms just like this one here in Philadelphia and all across the country. A democracy where people and not corporations, speech and not money decide who will be our representative, what they will pursue once in office, and what our future will look like together. No more shall we have people in these elected positions who choose their own voters, as they do in my home state of Texas and as they're about to do again through redistricting mid-decade. No longer can we have people who set themselves up for the rest of their natural lives. Instead, we want our public leaders to be public servants who are focused on and accountable to us in town hall meetings just like this one. We want a democracy and elections that are won on the ground, not through money, not through more digital ads, but people talking to people, listening to one another, working through their differences so that ultimately they can work together. That, to me, looks like a democracy. And what will it take specifically? Well, it means getting big money out of our politics. I know that Democrats have talked a great game about that in the past, but we actually gotta do something once we're in power. It means overturning Citizens United, which equates corporations with people and money with speech. It means passing the John Lewis Voting Rights Act so that people can vote in the state of Texas and Mississippi and Alabama and Georgia. It means term limits on every office in every state, no matter the position, so that we get more young people who look like and reflect the diversity of this country. And it means getting politicians out of the business of redistricting and returning the power back to the people, each and every single one of us, okay? That's the democracy that I'm talking about. But what I've come to learn by listening to my fellow Americans is that you will not have a political democracy if you do not also have an economic one. And so if the folks in America cannot get what they need from a government of the many, pretty soon they're gonna be open to getting what they need from a government of the few or a government even of one. We expect our fellow Americans to strive, to serve, and sometimes to sacrifice. That's just life. We've all had to do that. But we don't want our fellow Americans to have to struggle just to survive, and that's what they're doing today. So I want you to imagine this. I want you to imagine America where we guarantee that your take-home pay is something that you can live on. We want to imagine America where you can be guaranteed to be able to see a doctor or see a doctor before you're even sick or so that you don't get sick in the first place. You have access to fresh and healthy food, clean drinking water, that you have the time and space to exercise and move your body and spend that time with your kids, with your family, with your loved ones, the things that actually make life worth living. And we wanna make sure that you are guaranteed that if you work for it, you can be able to afford a home because today too many people are working for it and just cannot purchase it. That's the kind of economic democracy that we're talking about in this country. If you give people what they need, what they're legitimately asking for, then we have a chance of creating a political democracy in this country. And it's not like we don't have the resources to do it. We're the wealthiest, most powerful country, the face of the planet, all of human history. It's not for lack of resources, it is only for political will. Now this, I want you to imagine this for our future. Talked about America being the most powerful country on the planet. What if we use that power for good? What if we no longer turned our back on our friends and our allies, but instead worked with them on the things that we cannot do alone? Confronting climate change before it's too late or the issues of international migration or nuclear proliferation or stopping the wars that are being waged around the planet, sowing peace and reaping prosperity for everyone everywhere, but especially for the people here at home. And imagine America that really stood for human rights and was no longer complicit in the bombing and the starving and the slaughtering of children and families in Gaza. But instead, use that power, use that power to work with the nations of the region, the nations of the world, to establish an independent sovereign state for the Palestinian people and to guarantee the safety of every Palestinian, every Israeli, every person in that region. That's what we should be working on right now. And what if we brought that logic back home so you no longer had to fear a plainclothes, masked federal agent without a badge or a warrant sweeping you off the street and illegally arresting you, detaining you, imprisoning you, deporting you to a country you have never been to before, maybe into that Gulag in El Salvador from which you will never ever emerge? So imagine a future where we recommit ourselves to the United States Constitution, every right and protection contained therein, including due process, which is in sorely missing supply right now in America, that we, when we get power as Democrats, as we did in 2009, as we did in 2021, but we didn't use it. Next time we get it, we use it to rewrite our immigration laws in our own image, reflecting our own values, making sure that every dreamer is legalized, every dreamer's parents is legalized, every hard-working American doing a job that maybe no one in this room is willing to do is legalized, contributing even more as US citizens. And look, if you need to come to this country to join your family or to do work or to flee persecution or certain death, we wanna make sure that there's a safe, legal, orderly path for you to be able to do that. Most of us in this country agree on that and we should be able to accomplish it. But I think we're learning now, and the Senator pointed this out, well into the second Trump administration, this crackdown and this cruelty about immigrants isn't only about immigration. Because most of us can agree on the points that I just made, Republicans and Democrats alike, we also agree that we should be able to control our borders, know who's coming into this country, protect one another from violent criminals, whether they were born in Philadelphia or in another country. That much is clear. But I want you to remember this, when they tell us that immigrants are taking from us, immigrants are giving far more into this country than they'll ever be able to draw down throughout their entire lives. They are so much the source of the greatness of America. My hometown of El Paso, one of the safest. We've got some 915 in the house. El Paso, one of the safest cities in America, not in spite, but because it is a city of immigrants. It's not about immigrants. Just like the attacks on DEI are not really about whether we should have more diversity or equity or inclusion, just like the attacks on trans Americans are not about whether you should be able to be who you are at your core, they're trying to divide us so that they can distract us from what is really going on right now. This big, beautiful bill will transfer $4 trillion from working Americans to the very wealthiest. And in order to pay for it, they're gonna take millions of people off of Medicaid, literally a lifeline, cut 83,000 jobs at the VA, turning their back on those who put their lives on the line for this country, cutting SNAP and food benefits for kids who aren't getting enough calories in their belly to be able to learn that next day in school. If we were doing the same thing, we'd wanna distract the other side as well, and this has been going on for a long time. Over the last five decades, $50 trillion in wealth has moved from lower and middlecome Americans to the very wealthiest people on the planet who happen to live in this country, the 1%. So I want you to imagine a future and America where we stop this socialism for the rich and we make sure that those trillions flow to the people who actually created that wealth in the first place, working Americans here in Philadelphia and all across the country. What if we use some of those trillions to cure the cancers and the Alzheimer's that our loved ones are dying from, to do our part to confront climate change before it is too late, to build the millions of units of housing that we need in this country for people to live in, to pay down the deficit and the, and the budget, uh, budget debt? What if we did those things that would make all of our lives better together? And now this, last thing that I want you to imagine, imagine a Democratic Party that actually fights for these things. It doesn't submit, it doesn't roll over, it doesn't bend over, it doesn't tell us the fight is over before it has even begun. A Democratic Party that fights on every front, every place on the ballot, in every state. Look, we love that Pennsylvania is a battleground and so many hundreds of millions of dollars will flow through this state over the course of this presidential election cycle. It's important because we gotta win here. And as the Senator reminded us, it's not just at the very top of the ticket, it's every single place on the ballot has an impact on your life. We get that. But we sure as hell would love some of those resources to come to us in Texas or Alabama or Mississippi or these other states that matter and count as well. And when we're in Texas, we don't just go to the usual blue places. We go everywhere, to the remote rural red counties. You can see them as you are orbiting this planet from outer space because they glow so red. Those are the places that we need to find ourselves as well. Um, we've gotta be everywhere, fight for everyone. So our message is, if we're gonna have the broadest possible coalition, a true united front, that if you're in this room tonight and you voted for Donald Trump in the last election, you are welcome here, we glad, we're glad you came. If you voted for Kamala Harris, we are glad that you came. If you didn't vote last time at all, that's even better. We wanna listen to you and understand what it will take for you to vote in 2026. To realize this vision, we're going to need action. There are volunteers in these yellow vests and at the outside of this hall who, if you're willing to, will sign you up so that you can help to register voters, talk to voters ahead of 2026 and do that work right now in 2025 where it really matters. And last thing, for anyone wondering whether we can really pull this off or whether it is too late, I just want you or whether it is too late, I just want you to remember who we are at the end of the day, where we come from and what we're made of. We are the people, and you know this better than anybody else in the country, who defeated the most powerful empire on the planet to secure our independence and freedom. We are the people, not but 80 years later, who defeated the Confederacy at the cost of more than 300,000 Union dead, so many of them from this very city and ended the institution of slavery. We are the people who landed on those beaches in June of 1944 in Normandy, gave their lives to defeat fascism half a world away so that we could be here at home. We are the people who marched and fought and stood up to be counted during the civil rights and voting rights struggles to ensure that we could more fully realize the promise and hope of America, the Civil Rights Act of 64, the Voting Rights Act of 65. That is who we are at the end of the day. And you and I, we are the heirs to all the service, all the struggle, all the sacrifice that made that possible over these 249 years. It comes down now to us and what we do with this inheritance, whether in Lincoln's words, "we nobly save it" or "meanly lose it", is going to define us in the eyes of history and will determine what is possible going forward for this country. So no pressure, Philadelphia. But this moment is on all of us and we cannot be found wanting. Are you all with me? All right, we're together on this. That's my dream. I want to hear yours. Uh, Darini Patel has the other microphone. If you get her attention, she'll bring you the mic. And this gentleman has been super patient. He had a question. Let's make sure that we take the mic over to him. We're going to try to get as many people into this conversation as possible.
Okay, our first question.
Thank you very much for being here, sir. Uh, you got a great, you got a great, you know, story here. And the thing that means the most to me is the importance of getting the money out of politics. And another thing that you mentioned is these people who didn't vote. How do you get these people to vote? And I believe that if you want to get people in Pennsylvania excited enough to vote, well, the fact is, a lot of people don't vote because they believe that both parties are owned by the donor class, by the 1%. Both parties are owned by the corporations. And I think a real easy thing that we could do right here in Pennsylvania about that is talk to the Democratic leadership in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives and do something about a gift ban. We're not talking about campaign contributions. Pennsylvania is one of the few states in the country where any legislator can accept any gift from any lobbyist. And that has to change. So I hope we all talk to Joanna McClinton and the other members of the Pennsylvania leadership and get a gift ban. At least get it through the House. You don't have to worry, the Senate will never approve it. You'll still have unlimited gifts. But pass it through the House to give some people a message that we care about getting the money out of politics. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, listen, and, and you know, for those who think that it's not possible, um, you know, after Donald Trump won in 2016, I was in Congress. My wife and I looked at each other and said, "Look, what, what we've been doing", and I said this at the beginning tonight, "clearly it is not sufficient to the task. We got to do something else." And I had this idea of running against Ted Cruz for the United States Senate. Crazy, crazy talk, crazy talk. And, uh, you know, he was the runner-up to Donald Trump in the 2016 Republican presidential primary. But for Trump, that guy would have been the nominee. His, his name ID in Texas, 100%. My name ID in Texas, 1%. Um, how are we going to do this? And just to make it spicy, we decided that we would not take a single dollar from a single political action committee, not just corporate PACs, but Sierra Club or Planned Parenthood or unions or labor. No PACs at all, just human beings. Folks thought that we were absolutely crazy and maybe we were, but, but here's what happened. We raised more by not taking PAC money and just taking money 20 bucks, 25 bucks at a time than any Senate candidate in world history, certainly in United States history, right? And at the end of the day, though we came up a little bit short against Ted Cruz, 2.5%, um, we helped 12 insurgent Democrats defeat 12 incumbent Republicans in the state House. We helped Colin Allred and Lizzie Pannell Fletcher win their congressional races. 17 black women won election to judicial positions in Harris County. We, we transformed what was possible in the state of Texas. But here's to the gentleman's point. You know, there are some of us who are willing to take those risks and be bold in that way. But once we have power, when we have the White House and the House and the Senate, then we got to use that power. We got to pass the Voting Rights Act. We got to get big money and PACs out of politics. And, and to your point about the appearance and perception that there's corruption on both sides, you're, you're absolutely right. You know, billionaires are on the Democratic side as well. Corporations call a lot of the tune for many of our fellow Democrats, present company excluded. And if we're not honest about that, then no wonder people become cynical and say, "You know what? This thing is rigged. Why, why should I bother to vote?" They're not dumb, they're not lazy. Um, it's not that they don't love this country, they just get that this system is not fair. And, and until we fight for it to be fair, and then when we have power, actually make it fair, we're going to be in the same place. What was the big appeal of Donald Trump among others? He was going to drain the swamp. He was going to blow, blow this place up. So what if he took the Constitution and the rule of law down with him? "This system is not working for me," people were saying. And then that guy is saying it out loud and he's going to take it down. What do I have to lose? If Democrats keep saying, "I want to save the institutions, I want to save the system, I want to save this democracy." People recognize, sir, that you're absolutely right. What are you saving? If I don't have money, what influence do I have over the legislation that passes? Or who wins that next election? So we've got to clean this up and that's why I started my comments with that point. Thank you for, for making that case. Yeah.
Okay, our next question is right over here.
Hi, I want to thank you for coming out to our YDA conference and to come speak with us here today in Philly. Philly, can we give it up one more time for Beto O'Rourke? And for our next Congressman of Philadelphia, Sharif Street. I'm Austin with the Pennsylvania College Democrats. Um, so recently, a Yale youth poll from April 2025 found that voters ages 18 through 21 favor Republicans by almost 12 points. And now from 22 to 29, by Democrats by six points. How can we motivate the youth to get back out there supporting Democrats?
This is a great question. And you know, it's something that's on every, you know, political journalist's mind right now, right? Like, how are Democrats going to win back young voters? You have, uh, some Democrats who are going on Joe Rogan, which is great. I think we should be on Joe Rogan. Democrats who are, um, calling color commentary courtside at basketball games. That's great. Get more involved in athletics. I think the answer, and this may be too obvious, is why don't we follow young leaders like you who are the age of the people that we're trying to reach? And whatever you're doing right now, the conversations you're having, um, you, you are closest to the people that we are trying to turn out right now. And so part of the reason I asked if I could come to the Young Democrats of America convention and speak last night and be there for a town hall today, I want to listen and learn about what you're working on, what you're doing. And I'll share something that we're doing right now that seems to be working in Texas. Our, our group Powered By People, in, in our state of Texas, there is no online voter registration. In the year of our Lord, 2025, you cannot use the internet or the worldwide web to register to vote. You have to do it in person. If you even know what a stamp is, you got to find one of those, put it on an envelope, print something out, if you have a printer, fill that sucker out, send it in. And the voting laws have become so onerous that if it's not just absolutely perfect, it's going to get rejected. The only other way is you can have what is known as a volunteer deputy registrar, a VDR. And a VDR has to get certified in one of those 254 counties, has to pass a test and has to follow the law, but can register people in person. So Powered By People trains VDRs in Texas. And then we all deploy, I'm one of the volunteers, to college campuses and high school campuses. And we just have these open-ended conversations with the people that we want to learn from, the people that we want to register and the people that we want to turn out as Democrats. You can't do it with money. You cannot do it with technology and you cannot do it quickly. I might spend all day at the El Paso Community College Via Verde Campus and bring home a total of 12 registrations. It is slow, painful work. But it is, I think, the only way I know how to have the kinds of conversations and engagements that are really going to produce the results that we want. And so check this out. In 2024, first year that we ran the program that I'm describing, the United States as a whole, young people 18 to 29 turned out at a rate of 42% in America. The people that we met and registered and stayed in touch with, with Powered By People, turned out at a rate of 79% in the state of Texas. So this kind of personal engagement, it actually works. And so we are starting chapters on every college campus in the state of Texas. We have 1,300 active volunteers right now. But it's going to be that kind of persistent, patient, engaged work that is going to get us, Sarah, as well as listening to and following the lead that you're setting down right now. So thanks for coming. Appreciate it. Yep.
I'm to your left.
Hi Congressman, uh, my name is Carrie. Thank you so much for coming to Philly. Uh, my question for you is about the media ecosystem. There's been a lot of chatter about how Democrats can't break through. I think the Harris campaign did a really good job of trying to in her really short campaign. Um, since the election, it's been sporadic at best and that's something, someone is, who's chronically online, unfortunately, um, of democratic messaging and breaking through. Based on your town halls and being, you know, talking to people across the country, what have you seen have been the messages, but also the mediums that people are like actually responding to these days?
Yeah, really good question. You know, in, in, someone asked a similar question earlier today at the YDA Town Hall. They said, "In a post-truth world, how are we able to talk to people?" I, I mentioned registering voters at the Via Verde Campus in El Paso. Um, a young woman I was registering, uh, 18 years old. After I registered, she said, "Could I ask you a question?" She said, "This, this may sound stupid. How do you know what's real?" And I was like, "What, what do you mean?" And then I realized, you know, she doesn't subscribe to the El Paso Times. She doesn't watch broadcast news. She doesn't watch cable news. All of her information, 100% of it, is coming in through Instagram and TikTok. And she doesn't know what is right and what is wrong, what is true and what is made up. Um, so, so part of it is that personal engagement with her, right? Where we could talk through, she said, "Is Project 2025 a real thing?" I said, "Oh yeah, it is. Let me tell you where it came from and what they're going to do. And if Donald Trump wins, this is what your life is going to look like." You know, true enough. Um, but we got to do more than just that, right? And so I think, you know, part, part of the, I think, accurate tag on Democrats, again, present company excluded, but on some Democrats, is they were such purists and they were so enamored of this orthodoxy. And there was so much judgment and cancellation and excommunication if you didn't hew to the party line perfectly, that it bled into media. And I'm not going to go on Joe Rogan because he's too conservative. He endorsed Donald Trump. Or I'm not going to go on this show, I'm not going to talk to this person or this person, you know, used, uh, some, some bad language that I don't agree with. So I'm never going to be on their show. We've got to go everywhere, in the same way that physically we've got to go to every one of the 254 counties of Texas. We have to be on every single platform. We have to be on every podcast and radio show. We have to be in every single engagement that we can. I mean, those who favor our side, and I'm saying a pro-truth side, not a pro-Democrat side, are shrinking by the day. Stephen Colbert has just been canceled by CBS Paramount, maybe because Paramount has a deal that they need to have blessed by the Trump administration. Stephen Colbert has been critical of him almost every night that he's been on the air. So the onus then falls to us in whatever way we can. I, I like that. It's the same. No more CBS, no more Paramount per UI. I like that. I like that. Um, but, but you, you're, you're chronically online, so you must have some number of followers, right? And, and your ability to engage with them and to share, you know, what you talked about here tonight, I think that is really powerful. I mean, I think it's person to person, human to human, ideally in formats like this. But if we can't do it, we got to do it online, we do it there as well. So I, I think, I think that's it. And then, you know, in the message, you know, the message has to be, they're trying to divide us. They're trying to distract us. It's not about all these things they say it is. This crazy blizzard of bizarre behavior from the president, he does not want you focused on the fact that he's robbing you blind right now and is not delivering for your basic needs, which we just described a second ago. When Democrats get in power, they have to quit screwing around and really deliver for people, right? Or we're not going to be trusted again. So I think the message is the performance. Yeah. Okay, Darini.
Okay, our next question is over here.
Hello, sir. Welcome to Philly.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm a 23-year-old middle school teacher. I am represented by Malcolm Kenyatta, who I voted for very proudly. Uh, you are a longtime known quantity in the Democrat Party and I'm glad for it. But there are lots of other known quantities in the Democrat Party. I'd like to know how you feel about, um, other known quantities such as Chuck Schumer and Hakeem Jeffries refusing to endorse Sauron Mandani and the New York nomination.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And thank you for your public service as a middle school teacher. That's not an easy job, man. Yeah.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
We, uh, our youngest just graduated from, uh, middle school and is going to be a freshman at El Paso High next year. And I, I really felt like maybe we should write, you know, an apology note to every one of, of his teachers for, for, you know, we just know how tough he is at home. But thank you for what you're doing. That's, that's really important. Let, let me answer your question in the positive. Um, Zohran Mondani is one of the most exciting political leaders that I have seen in my life. Um, you know, I, I talked about being with people. That guy was with folks on the bus. He was on, with folks on the subway. He was in bagel shops. He was in mosques. He was in churches. He was everywhere people were, he wanted to be with them. And, and to this great question about the medium, he's a master of the medium of TikTok. And if you followed any of his TikToks, and I know you all did, so many of them were not him saying, "If I'm elected mayor, I'm going to do X, Y, and Z." It was him with another microphone saying, "Hey, what, what do you want to see in your city?" And he would allow everyday average New Yorkers to describe their dream. And then he took all their dreams and he incorporated it into their campaign. They live in the most expensive city in America, one of the most expensive cities on the planet. They can't afford to get to work, so he's talking about making the buses free. They can't afford to pay the note on their mortgage or even buy a home in the first place, much less make rent on their apartment. So he's talking about freezing the rent for those who are eligible. He's talking about things that people need. And I think that's what we should be doing, those of us who want to pursue paths in public service, which I hope you are going to do, is you reflect back what people want. So he's really exciting to me. You know, on, on the other end of the age spectrum, um, we just did an event with Bernie Sanders in, in Fort Worth. Who knew? But, but that guy was right. Um, everything he's been saying for as long as he's been saying it, he's been saying it for a long, it just turns out he was 100% right. And, and our failure as a country, myself included, not, not to fully understand that or support it or get behind it or make sure that he could be in a position to actually move on that, I think in part produced what we see right now. When I, when I mentioned earlier, our country's in trouble, not only have, have we not averted it, we might have contributed to it. I think some of our half-measures and half-steps, when people are really hurting and really in need, that contributed to it. AOC on the younger side, she's barnstorming the country, doing amazing things. Greg Cassar in Texas, there, there's so many good people out there right now. Um, so what's that? David Hogg, yeah. Uh, he, he was talking to the, to the young Democrats as well. And, and look, you know, if it were any other time in American history, you know, maybe we say, "You know what, Chuck Schumer, you know, maybe not with me 100% on every issue and maybe, you know, maybe he should move on, but he's a nice guy and, you know, it's his turn and we got to wait." But, but we are literally at the very edge, like we're about to go over the cliff. They are pushing us. And if we don't have people who can push back, and Chuck Schumer talking about rolling over, when the Republicans offered that continuing resolution, that funding bill for the United States government with no strings attached, it was just an open grab bag for Donald Trump and Elon Musk. Every Democrat in the House of Representatives voted against it. Every Democrat in the Senate was prepared to do the same and would be able to stop it. And Chuck Schumer, for some unknown reason, submitted to the president at the moment that we need him to fight. So to answer your question, we need to replace those who submit with those who will fight. Okay? Thank you for asking.
Our next question is here.
Hi, how are you? I'm Sarah. Um, I don't know if this is a fully formed question, it's more like, want your opinion on it. So it was 4th of July and my parent, you know, I was talking to my mom and her friends and they were like, "We're mourning this year, we're not participating." Whereas my husband and I are like, "We don't want anything more taken away from us." We have a semi, sorry, a semi-quinsentennial, I said it right. Everybody's semi-quinsentennial coming up. I don't want that taken away from us. So it's kind of a question about hope and not, you know, we, everyone's entitled to feel how they want and participate in things how they want. But for me, I'm not giving away one more damn thing to them. So that's one thing. And then the last thing I'll say, just so anybody's familiar, I'm not affiliated with them. The Liberty Museum on Tuesdays, having a great thing with some authors about cancel culture and freedom of speech. having a great thing with some authors about cancel culture and freedom of speech. And I highly recommend, there's gonna be a lot of good authors. So if you're interested in this, that might be something you're interested as well.
Awesome. Thank you for being here. Is, is, I'm, I'm gonna answer your question with a story, because your question is excellent. It's fully formed. Are, are any of Angela McIver's family here tonight? I, I see them, I see them there in the back. I, I wanna tell you a, a quick story, an important one, profound for me and the impact it's had in my life. A hundred and one years ago, if you guys can believe this, the Texas Legislature banned voting by African-Americans. And unlike some of the other states of the former Confederacy, they didn't do it euphemistically. It wasn't, you know, you must recite this part of the Mississippi State Constitution, or you must pass this literacy test, or you must tell us how many jelly beans are in the jar. In Texas, in black and white, it said, "If you're black, you cannot vote." And there was this outstanding person in El Paso, my hometown, Dr. Lawrence Nixon, physician. He founded the first chapter of the NAACP anywhere in the state of Texas. He did it in El Paso in nineteen fourteen. So in nineteen twenty-four, he nonetheless pays his poll tax, right? This like, this like commitment to democracy, even though he would not be allowed to vote. Goes to his normal polling place, Fire Station Number Five, waits in line, gets to the front of the line, puts his polling tax receipt down on the counter. And the election judge and the poll worker who recognized Nixon by sight because he's never missed an election before, they say, "Dr. Nixon, you know we can't let you vote." And Nixon says, "I know you can't, but I've got to try." And he takes his case to the local district court, loses it, appeals it to the United States Supreme Court, wins this landmark voting rights decision in nineteen twenty-seven, only to have the Texas Legislature convene an emergency session, just like they're about to do Monday in my home state. And they changed the voting laws to circumvent the Supreme Court ruling. And once again, Nixon is banned from voting, as is every other black man and black woman in the state of Texas. Every single year, he pays his poll tax. Every single year, he tries to vote. Every single year, he's turned back. He wins a second Supreme Court victory in nineteen thirty-two, only to have the state legislature meet, change the voting laws once again to disenfranchise him. Nixon and African-Americans in Texas did not win the right to vote nominally until nineteen forty-four. Think how many black men from the state of Texas gave their lives in a fight against fascism for quote-unquote "democracy" in a land where they were not counted as full citizens and could not cast a ballot. For twenty years, this guy labored alone in obscurity. Most of you don't know his name until he finally came through. The radio station on Election Day in El Paso during this time would call him, put him on the air for their listeners and say, "Dr. Nixon, are you gonna try to vote today?" I think probably to make fun of him. And Nixon would respond, "I'm gonna try." Well, his effort not only integrated elections in Texas, it influenced a young congressman by the name of Lyndon Baines Johnson, who, when he became the President of the United States of America, used every ounce of political capital he had to move civil rights, which had been an effort that had been unsuccessful for ninety years in this country. The next year, the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five, which for the first time created a multiracial democracy in America. So for those of us who are tempted, and we all are, myself included, to despair or to give in or to give up, they've got too much power. They've got all the billionaires. They've got the White House, the House, the Senate, the United States Supreme Court. Who are we against all of that? I mean, who the hell was Dr. Lawrence Nixon against all of them? And look at the world that he changed, the world that he delivered for us. And his great-grandchildren are here today. I want them to stand up and say hello. I'm so glad you all came today. So I, I think about Nixon and I think about John Lewis and everyone that we're talking about here today. If they could do it against odds even longer, who are we not to try? So thank you for your question. Love it. Yeah.
Okay, our next question is here.
Hi, hi. My name is Ginny George. I work for the Register of Wills downtown. I've been there one, one year and two months. And I'm, I love the job and I love the people I work with. I just wanted to ask you, we're, you were talking about Gaza and Palestine. First of all, I'm, I'm not Palestinian. I'm Indian. And I am a Christian woman. And I wanted to ask you about, about AIPAC money. Are you guys gonna take, Bernie Sanders, who is my North Star, he's, he said that, that people should not take, that, that Democrats should not take AIPAC money. Are you guys gonna, is there anything that you're gonna do where you don't take AIPAC money? And second thing, I wanted to ask you, are you, are you Democrats, everybody who's running should be out in the streets with us protesting and doing the actions that we're doing? That, that's important. It's important that you, it's important that people see you with, with the people, you know?
Yeah. So great. Two, two good questions. On, on AIPAC, a, a hundred percent agree with you. No one should be taking their money. They are complicit in the political pressure campaign to get members of Congress, Democrats and Republicans, to continue to support the war effort in Israel against the people of Gaza. And the, the death toll now, over fifty-thousand people, the vast majority of them completely innocent of any crime or participation in any war or any act of terrorism. What's that? Mothers and children. Mothers and children. So many thousands of them, children. And, and we know, all of us here and, and our fellow Americans, especially young people, know clearly what is right and what is wrong. And, and that is absolutely wrong. And we cannot just blame it on the IDF or on Netanyahu. This is also us. We, we are the largest donor to the, the state of Israel. They're the largest recipient of US foreign aid. And we're actually giving them the targeting information. We're actually giving them the armaments and the bombs that they are using to kill innocent people. And so any organization, including AIPAC, that wants to further our complicity in something that is so immoral, is something that we should steer very clear of. On your second point, on your second point about protesting, you're absolutely right. You know, the, the protesting is breaking through. And, and to the question asked by the woman behind you about how we, we connect with people, you know, not everyone's gonna know that we're cutting eighty-three thousand jobs at the VA, or that millions are gonna lose their Medicaid. When we protest at these No Kings or Hands Off or other rallies that indivisible and other groups are organizing, that's how we break through. It's covered in the news. People see the signs. People walk by. They take a chance to listen to you. It changes their mind. And Abraham Lincoln said, "Look, you've got the power of the presidency. You've got the power of the courts. You have the legislatures as well. More powerful than all of that is the people. More powerful than all of that is you and me." And, and he said, "Public sentiment is everything. With it, nothing can fail. Without it, nothing can succeed." And we are changing public sentiment. So on the policy issue that Donald Trump focused on most in twenty twenty-four, immigration, sealing the border, deporting people, his approval rating on immigration right now is thirty-six percent. People don't like what is going on in this country. And when we protest and engage with them, it changes their opinion about whether they really want Donald Trump leading this effort right now. So I agree with you. If, if there is a protest out there, join it. If there's not a protest out there, organize it. Let's all get out there and make sure our fellow Americans hear us. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next question is here.
Hello.
Hi there.
You said something in the beginning about Democrats have made mistakes, but then you didn't elaborate. So I'm gonna elaborate a couple of things for you.
Please.
The first thing is that Joe Biden, I'm from the state of Delaware, and I love Joe Biden. Joe Biden ran to prevent Trump from getting a second term. I know, and I've, and I wish, think that Democratic Party knew that he only intended to run and serve that one term. I do not understand why, in the beginning of that term, the Democratic Party did not come together and figure out who was gonna be his replacement, instead of letting him get sick and then acting like he did something wrong. And then Kamala Harris, who was brilliant, but I knew, as much as I wanted and prayed for her to win, I knew that she wasn't. And I was so sad for that. But I faulted and I was very angry with the Democratic Party. So I took a trip to Belize and forgot about y'all for a while. But at any rate, that's my first question. I was very disappointed that it wasn't more planning, because you knew better than we did, well, I knew, my sister knew, and some of my friends knew, that this was gonna be catastrophic. This was gonna be the carnage that he declared, declared in his speech in the first presidency, "I'm gonna get rid of this American carnage" or some nonsense. But at any rate, that's my first question. Second question is, you talk about people getting together and not taking money from PACs and all this, but there has been nothing done since I can remember about corporations being allowed to be in our politics. There's lobbyists, ever since corporations won that lawsuit where they were allowed to be seen as an individual and therefore have the right to put whatever money they have in as an individual. That is, well, it's bogus, let me say that.
Yeah.
So if you do not do anything about that, all this is not gonna happen, because that is a huge deterrent to us having a strong democracy.
Great. I love that. You know, real quick response, unless you wanted to add something first?
No.
Okay, so real quick response on that. Agree with you on, on your assessment of the failures of the Democratic Party. I mean, we're basically telling the American public, "Are you gonna believe us or your lying eyes about Joe Biden?" I mean, the, the American public had made that decision. He, he was not fit to continue that job. Even if he was fit to make the policy and make the decisions, he could not communicate what he was doing to the American people. And I would say that's ninety percent of the job of being president.
And I don't think that was, I don't think that was said enough. I mean, his presidency, I've had, I thought I had favorite presidents before. But I'll tell you honestly, Joe Biden, not because I'm from Delaware, but when I looked at what he did
Yeah.
during those four years.
Look at what he did. On, the, the first president to do something on climate, he cut childhood poverty in half in places like Texas.
It was not, the Democratic Party did not follow up on that.
That's right.
And it was, and it irked me.
We, we did Joe Biden a disservice by, by having him go out there and try to save the country a second time from Donald Trump, when he was in no position
Right.
to be able to do that. And those closest to-
Well, why didn't you?
Well, you-
I'm not saying you particularly. I'm, why?
Yeah. You know, I, I'll tell you, perhaps like many of you, I, I listened to those who was closest to him, who said, "Hey, you know what? He, he's as sharp as he's ever been. He's doing this great work that you and I just agreed that he's doing. He feels like he's the one guy who can do this." And, and do you wanna be the person that chips away or damages him if he is hell-bent and intent and the people around him on running again? Or do you just decide, "Hey, it looks like this is happening. Let's do everything we can to make him successful"? With the benefit of hindsight, oh, oh, believe me, I, I sure wish that I had raised my hand and said, "Hey, hold on a second. Th- this does not seem right." And, and you are absolutely correct. We should not have done that in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three. We should have done that in twenty twenty-one. Hey, great. You saved the country, Mr. President. We owe you an eternal debt of gratitude. Now let's start thinking about the primary that we wanna hold to replace you with the best and brightest minds within the Democratic Party. So I, I absolutely agree with that. And, and so, look, we've gotta learn from that. And there was a good question about Chuck Schumer and some other leaders right now, who, we thank them for their service, but now might be time to get out of the way and allow new energetic people who wanna fight for this country to be able to do that. And so the, the other question was about the two thousand ten Supreme Court decision, Citizens United, that said corporations are people and money is speech. It is hard to think in the, in the Supreme Court, you know, they're, they're really giving us a run for our money on this distinction. But it is harder to think of a more dogshit decision that, that the Supreme Court has ever rendered, because it opened the floodgates to what we're seeing in America today. You know, Elon Musk spending three hundred million dollars to help elect Donald Trump, that is a drop in the bucket to his total wealth. He's the wealthiest man on the planet today. He could spend three billion dollars to help Trump in a third term, should he choose, or somebody else for that matter. So could a Democrat on the other side. And, and people are paying attention when we don't walk the talk. When we say, "Hey, we don't want this big money in politics, but we'll continue to take it." And when we get into power and we have the White House, the House and the Senate, we fail to do anything to try to overturn or reverse Citizens United. I think that has to be, if we care about democracy, the number one thing. That's why I mentioned it when I was saying, when we, when we are imagining a new democracy, here's what it looks like and here's how we get there. We've gotta reverse Citizens United and get big money out of politics. Yes, Mr. Reenie?
Yeah, we have a follow-up comment here.
Yeah. Hello, Mr. O'Wort.
Hi there.
I wanted to say, when we talk about "we the people, for the people, by the people", I feel as though the people should have more power. As far as impeachment power, the, the power of the purse, congressmen, senators, anyone that's not doing their job, there should be not just general elections, there should be interim elections if something's not going right, and we get a chance to decide to vote on that. Should those people stay? Should those people go? Why should the people have to wait four years, three-year, two-year terms, when it's supposed to be "we the people"? And also, right, but we should have more power to say, "Look, Congress is not working in our best interest right now. This Congress has been in for six months, seven months. We can already see where they're headed." By now, we should be getting a vote on, are we gonna continue this administration on the road that's, is going down or not? So a lot of those laws need to be changed. And the Democrats have a tendency to be so weak at times.
Yeah.
We say power of the purse is in the Congress. Actually, power of the purse is sitting in this damn room. Every April, we run around, file taxes. There should be a boycott on that.
Yeah. All right, let me, let me, let me give you an answer. The best, the best one that I've got, where-
Don't file your taxes.
Yeah.
Let, they want the millionaires to have the money? Let them pay for this shit. What you file, what you running around filing your taxes for? What you getting out of it? My daughter working two jobs. I just got laid off from a nursing home that I've been at for sixteen years, because they foresee those Medicaid cuts coming down. So he figured he better downsize now. So the power of the purse is sitting right in this room. But we never grab it. We never, we so, the, the Republicans don't care what they do. And the Democrats need to stop with this, don't wanna stack the Supreme Court. Come on, wake up.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. I'll tell you, sometimes, you know, I look at it this way between the two parties. Democrats care more sometimes about being right than they care about being in power. Republicans only care about being in power. They could care less what is right or what is wrong. Now, I'm not saying that we have to be them, but we have to care a lot more about power going forward. And here's one of the answers to your questions. You know, the, the next chance we have to place a check on this president and the Republicans and the billionaires who are in power right now is the twenty twenty-six midterm election. And Katie from Fort Worth brought this point up earlier today. In Texas, because they're worried they're gonna lose their slim majority in the House, Donald Trump is forcing the state of Texas to redraw its congressional maps this year. The special session of the legislature is going to start meeting on Monday. And if they're able to redraw two, three, four, maybe even five congressional districts and pack them with Republican voters, they might be able to steal this next election. It might really actually come down to the state of Texas. So one of the things that I want you to be thinking about when the legislature in Texas meets on Monday, is there's a chance that those legislators are gonna take your advice and start thinking about power, and they are going to leave the state of Texas to deny the legislature a quorum to be able to pass this redistricting plan in the state of Texas. And if you see them do that, if you see them do that, know this, each and every single one of them is gonna be fined five hundred dollars a day personally. They can't pay it out of their campaign accounts. They're gonna need to have a hotel and a place to eat, and maybe bring their family up to wherever they are. And they may need to be there month after month after month after month, because the governor can call one special session after another. And you know that Donald Trump is gonna send his goons- And you know that Donald Trump is going to send his goons to find them wherever they are and drag them back to Texas. So these folks are, we need to have their backs if they choose to do this, and God, I hope they do, because this is all about power, fighting with everything that we've got, and we've got to make sure that we have their backs and we've got to win in 2026. And we've got to take your mindset and have that fighting spirit in each and every one of us everywhere across this country. Darini?
Okay, our next question is here.
Hi, my name is Sophia and I'm transgender and autistic. And until 10 years ago, when I moved here in Philadelphia, I lived in Tennessee, which is a state which is competing with Texas for who can go further the wrong way. Anyways, but the thing is, there were some good people there in Tennessee too, and we used to be part of an organization called Democracy for America, where we would like every week meet in person, not on Zoom, in person. And we would, not just plan organizing, but we would actually build community. The people in your fellow DFA chapter were not just your fellow activists, they became your friends. And that made a difference, not just for the personal lives of the people involved, but also for the momentum of the movement. And DFA did great things, like getting Obama elected, for example, for example. DFA did great things and they did it because they didn't meet in Zoom, they met in person every week and everything. What can we do to have something like that again?
You and I are singing the same song. I mean, this is why we're doing these town halls. We're not focused on doing this stuff digitally, at a distance. We want to be face-to-face, eye-to-eye, just like you and I are right here. There is something so profoundly powerful about that. I mean, as human beings, this is kind of what we're wired for. And the other stuff is always a poor substitute that leaves you feeling empty after you've engaged or doom scrolled or even been on a Zoom with people that you might otherwise like. And so, I mean, the question is really for you, as it is for me, about what we are going to do in our own lives to bring people together, to host meetings just like these. Doesn't matter how many people come up, a start is a start and it's going to grow from there. When we ran our organizing program on the ground in 2018 for that US Senate race, we had tens of thousands of volunteers and we gave people the power. We said, you can set up a campaign office in your home, in your business, in the local coffee shop, at the bar, at the end of the block, wherever you want to, that's where people are going to physically convene, that's where they're going to get their walk lists and then they're going to go out. And people said, not only did we knock, you know, more doors than had ever been knocked in a campaign in Texas history before, but people built this community that is still going on eight years later. People got married, like they met each other at that bar, you know, and fell in love and really good things flowed and came from that. And again, I think one of the things plaguing our party is we've become so enamored of what money can buy or what technology can do. And yes, there's a place for those two things, but it doesn't supersede this, people being with people. This, I think, is the answer. That's why we're going everywhere, holding these town halls. So thank you, thanks for being here and asking us.
I'm in front, Beto, this is our next question.
Hi, thank you for being here today. I wanted to address what to me feels like the elephant in the room, that as grateful as we are that you're here, we're hearing from a Texan and our state senators won't talk to us. They won't come have town halls with us. Our other representatives won't talk to us either. I have parents who live in central PA who are very staunch Republicans, who for the first time in their lives called their representatives over the big beautiful bill and they didn't listen. I bully John Fetterman on social media every single day. But I'm at a loss for what else we can do here to get our elected representatives to listen to us and engage with us.
So great question. That's a really Pennsylvania-specific one. Look, I'll tell you a couple of things. One, here in the city of Philadelphia, one, I'm a state senator, I'm here and I represent Philly. So our state senators, but your bigger point is about our congressional representatives here in Pennsylvania. So Mary Gay Scanlon and Brendan Boyle have been doing town halls, they're doing them. And they've done, and I've been in a couple of them with them. And Congressman Evans, God help him, is doing the best he can. You know, he had a stroke and so he's doing the best he can about getting out there, but he's already announced he's not running for reelection. That's part of why I'm running for Congress and hopefully, and when I do that, I'll be here doing that as well. But the real issue is beyond Philadelphia and beyond the southeast. You're talking about Representative McKenzie in the Lehigh Valley and how he didn't do it. You're talking about Scott Perry, where you live out in central Pennsylvania, in the Capitol region. You're talking about Representative Sheehan and how he hasn't done it up in Scranton. You're talking about those folks. Well, Fitzpatrick in Bucks County, exactly. We've had, the Democratic Party has had town hall meetings. And I want to thank the Democratic members of Congress who represent other parts of the country who've been coming in. Ro Khanna was out in Fitzpatrick's district. He came out there and he talked about the issues so that people could hear the issues. We had, we've had members of Congress go to all, we had Jamie, Jamie Raskin was in with us in the 7th Congressional District where McKenzie didn't show up. So we are going to continue to be there and have these events. And if the Republican members who represent the Commonwealth won't show up, we're going to have the meetings without them, even if we've got to sit an empty chair there. We're going to make sure that we're there. And I will tell you, some of our delegation here in the Commonwealth, it hasn't been, because Representative Scanlon came with us with Jamie Raskin when we were in Allentown. And we've had members of Congress from this Commonwealth go to other places, but you're right. What they don't want to do is get their own, they don't want to get the people from their own areas to have an opportunity to talk because they don't want to hear what they have to say. But we've got to keep showing up, we're going to keep doing it. And I'll tell you, in the General Assembly, in the State House, in the State Senate, Representative Kenyatta has been traveling around, Speaker McClintock has held events. And then the Democratic Senator, Art Haywood, has been touring around the Commonwealth as well. So listen, we're going, as Democrats, we're going to make sure that we're not just in the areas we represent, where we'll be there too. We're going to make sure we're in all of those other areas and we have town hall meetings there as well. So I do hear you, we recognize what's happening, you are absolutely right, they're hiding, but you kind of call it out because we have great candidates running in each of those seats. And I'll tell you, if Texas does deliver five seats because of their gerrymandering, without redrawing the maps, there is a good chance Pennsylvania could flip four congressional seats to make up for that difference. We have the power to do a lot of it here, right here in the Commonwealth. There is only a three-seat margin. We have enough seats to flip the entire Congress of the United States, the entire United States House of Representatives, if we flip each and every one of those swing seats here in the Commonwealth. But guess what? And so for everybody, if you're in a safe district, like make sure you're engaged in those areas to get people out, but also take some time to call in to help Janelle Stelson, who's going to be running out there for a second time to take out Scott Perry. Make sure that you're knocking on some doors up in Bucks, it's not that far away. Go out to Allentown, make sure we, in Scranton and Hazelton, talking to folks as well because those races matter. And if we're going to flip the Commonwealth, we're going to do our part in the Commonwealth to flip the US House. You're right, we've got to make sure that people in those districts understand and hear from Democrats, even if their congressional representatives won't speak up, we will speak up. You're talking about in terms of the technology or? So what, what part of the, so I will say this, there's been a real tension around that, so at one point we were all paper and then we went all like computer stuff. So the younger people, no, we did. So now, I've heard from a lot, I know a lot of the young people are really excited about Mobilize and all the great things that have happened. We're going to do both. We're going to have people that can, we're going to still be able to get, where's John Brady? Okay. He's coming back. So anyway, we're going to make sure that we have paper and that people can paper volunteer as well. And for everyone who is a little bit more tech savvy, you can easily sign up on Mobilize. And I'll tell you, if I didn't have staff, I probably wouldn't know how to get on Mobilize either, I'm going to admit that. But we're going to make sure that you can do it both ways. And so we're going to do it both ways. Right now, we've leaned, the last year particularly, the presidential campaign wanted us, every volunteer to be in Mobilize. We did knock 31 million doors in the state, that's every door three times. But I agree, we can't just be a tech thing. That was part of the presidential this year, you could do it either way. And you wanted to add something?
Hi, my name's Bree, I'm the comms director for Pennsylvania College Democrats. And I'm also the political director for the University of Pittsburgh Democrats. And we knocked thousands of doors, just, I know on college campuses, like obviously we're young kids, we're tech savvy, but just when you're going out, your county, your community, there are Democratic people there that want you there. They are hard to find, sometimes, but if we can find them, y'all can Google. I believe in you, you can Google. Exactly, you can Google. Facebook, community groups, places like, not even social media, just Googling, when does my local Democratic Party meet? And you show up, you say, hi, my name is whatever your name is, and you introduce yourself to your local party chair, your local committee person. You go run to be a committee person. I know multiple of us, even in our 20s, are committee people in Allegheny County. You have to go, you, like, it's not easy, and I'm saying that from us, but it's worth it and I believe it's worth at least an hour of your time to go find those places.
So what, what part of Pennsylvania you live in? We'll talk afterward. Got it. So we'll talk about, we'll talk about what do it in Scranton. If you're here in Philadelphia, if you go to Three Night, if you go to Third and Spring Garden, City Committee building is open. We are one of the, not every county party can afford to have an office that's open all the time. Scranton Dems do, Lackawanna, they have one, so we'll make sure we get there. Right, we got someone from Scranton here, we'll make sure we get that. But if you are in Philadelphia, the Philadelphia City Committee Office is open and staffed five or sometimes six days a week. Now, I'm not thinking, I'm running. Well, I want to say this, yeah, I'm dead, so one, I will, every day I get up and go down there, fight Trump's agenda. And I want you to know something, you know, you're Congressman Evans, because you know, I've known Congressman Evans my entire life, you know, since I was a kid. He has been a mentor and a friend to me and it was personal and I've talked to him about this and what happened on that day. So just like you were worried about him, I was worried about him. He's not a stranger to me and for a lot of people, he's just a guy on TV. But I've known Congressman Evans since he was a state representative. When I was in high school, he came to speak to me, he talked to us. I've known him when I was a little kid, because you know, he and my dad were friends. So you know, I've known him my whole life, so just as, it is just as personal for me as it was for you, what happened on that day. And I remember hearing about what happened from other members of Congress. And you're right, it's unconscionable that he sits in the White House, able to do those things. And we will fight his agenda each and every day. And we thank you for your service, we honor you and I appreciate your passion and I will never let the attack on Congressman Evans go forgotten about. Yes.
Okay, folks, this is going to be the last question, I'm so sorry if I couldn't get to you.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name's Kaki and I'm from Delaware and my husband calls me his favorite Texican because I was born in Beaumont, Texas.
Right on, we were just there.
A little fireball.
Jefferson County.
So John from the People's Union has called for a general boycott on Saturday, August 9th, I believe it is. And I'd like to know your feelings or your input about a general strike so we can shut it down.
So many of the questions tonight are about how we break through and how people understand the urgency of the moment and the lateness of the hour. And we talked about the, you know, no kings and the hands-off and these other rallies, which they are changing public perception. That's what we need and that's why Trump has ordered Texas to redraw its congressional boundaries. He can see that far into the future. He is going to lose his control of Congress if he doesn't change the rules mid-year. But what we're doing is not enough. It just, it's great, it's moving, but they're moving as well. I mean, they're dismantling stuff right before our eyes, you know, congressionally-chartered departments like the Department of Education, USAID, you know, people by the tens of thousands being fired from the federal government, ignoring federal judges' court orders, defying the Constitution and the rule of law. I mean, there's only one place this goes. You know, if we followed the Weimar Republic in the 1930s, we know exactly where this ends up. They use the levers of a democracy, including getting elected into office, to then dismantle that democracy before our eyes. And if we wait until 2028, it is too late. So all of that wind up to say that the things that we would never do in normal times, we must do today. And desperate times are going to call for desperate measures. So I love the idea of one day, everybody, we get their attention and we say, hey, wake up, this is happening to our country right now, we have to pay attention, we have to do something. And then if we can convert that awareness into action, you know, people signing up with the Pennsylvania Dems or signing up with Powered by People or choosing to run for office or getting behind a great candidate who is running for office, all of that will pay off for us in 2026. But this is, you know, it's like, almost like the boy that cried wolf. Every politician that's ever come before you has told you that this is the most important election of our lifetimes. They said that in 1998 and 2002 and on and on and on. I mean, this one, if there is not a check on Donald Trump going into 2028, he has already told us that he is going to pursue a third term. He has a majority on the Supreme Court that will help him to do that. He is already trying to take citizenship away from millions of Americans who were born in this country, in the United States of America. The 14th Amendment ratified in 1868, he has a majority on the court to overturn that as well. This is really kind of our last best hope. But if we start working on it in 2026, we're cooked. We've got to do the work right now. So I love this idea, let's spread the word. And again, any protest, let's join it, let's get out there. You know, we may be the lone person on the street corner, but that's okay, we're going to reach somebody, we're going to change their lives, they're going to come into this movement. But I bet you on the 9th, it's August 9th, right? I bet you on the 9th, we're going to reach a lot of people that otherwise were unaware of what's happening right now. So thank you for this. Thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for keeping the faith and keeping up the fight. We'll see you out there. Thank you, Senator Street. Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you all.